Good. It's ready on the left.
All right.
Ready, Charlie?
Right. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Board of Education of Goshen Central School District, Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Board of Education of Goshen Central School District, being held on Tuesday, February eighteenth, twenty twenty five, six thirty P M in the District Administration Building. being held on Tuesday, February eighteenth, twenty twenty five, six thirty P M in the District Administration Building.
I, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as justice for all. I, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as justice for all.
Moving on to our next item, we can turn it over to Dr. Coats. Moving on to our next item, we can turn it over to Dr. Coats.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. It's always wonderful to be able to start a meeting with a celebration. Thank you, Mr. Loftus. It's always wonderful to be able to start a meeting with a celebration. And we're a little bit off cycle with this celebration, but it it's truly a great night to welcome two of our staff members who are candidates for tenure tonight. And we're a little bit off cycle with this celebration, but it it's truly a great night to welcome two of our staff members who are candidates for tenure tonight. As I always like to remind our staff, an investment in tenure is not only a short term investment financially, As I always like to remind our staff, an investment in tenure is not only a short term investment financially, but it's an investment in your human capital and what you bring to the district as well, what you have to offer, but it's an investment in your human capital and what you bring to the district as well, what you have to offer and what you bring to our students and their families who you serve each and every day. and what you bring to our students and their families who you serve each and every day. So, over premature, congratulations to our tenure candidates for tonight. So, over premature, congratulations to our tenure candidates for tonight. This is a great accomplishment. We're so very proud, all of us, to be here to celebrate with you tonight. This is a great accomplishment. We're so very proud, all of us, to be here to celebrate with you tonight. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Carter to invite our principals forward with that. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Carter to invite our principals forward with that. He's pretending he's coming back. He's the one that's pretending he's coming back.
Thank you, Dr. Coats. Thank you, Dr. Coats. So I'm very pleased to be here with everyone this evening to present two outstanding teachers So I'm very pleased to be here with everyone this evening to present two outstanding teachers for consideration in front of the Board of Education for tenure. for consideration in front of the Board of Education for tenure. I've had the unique opportunity of spending some time with both of these candidates. I've had the unique opportunity of spending some time with both of these candidates. I do believe that both have done an outstanding job in the classroom and have made positive impact within the school community. I do believe that both have done an outstanding job in the classroom and have made positive impact within the school community. So we're very pleased to to present Nancy Bowden and Fred Miles this evening. So we're very pleased to to present Nancy Bowden and Fred Miles this evening. With that being said, I'd like to first bring up Dr. Wentworth to present Ms. Nancy Bowden. With that being said, I'd like to first bring up Dr. Wentworth to present Ms. Nancy Bowden.
Okay, so over here still. Okay, so over here still.
That's great. That's great.
Where do you want us? Where do you want us? Remember the camera can pick you up. Remember the camera can pick you up. Okay, I'm the camera. Okay, I'm the camera. It's fine, I'll get it. It's fine, I'll get it. Oh, that poses a nuisance. That post is a nuisance. Oh, this is interesting. Oh, this is interesting. Okay, so, thank you for having me tonight. Okay, so, thank you for having me tonight. I'd like to introduce our tenure candidate at G I S, Nancy Bowden. I'd like to introduce our tenure candidate at G I S, Nancy Bowden. Not only has Nancy Bowden Not only has Nancy Bowden just going through a list of some of her accomplishments. just going through a list of some of her accomplishments. Not only is she a phenomenal teacher in general in in all aspects of what we're looking for, Not only is she a phenomenal teacher in general in in all aspects of what we're looking for, she also implements a lot of innovative classroom practices. she also implements a lot of innovative classroom practices. Just this year, she and her partner in term and putting initiative into remove traditional desks in the classroom Just this year, she and her partner in term and putting initiative into remove traditional desks in the classroom and implement more and more flexible seating. and implement more and more flexible seating. She has independently fundraised over the summer to help fund that project She has independently fundraised over the the summer to help fund that project as well as working with the P T O and the Pi Run as well as working with the P T O and the Pi Run and getting one hundred percent student participation in one of the fundraising events, which earned additional money as a reward for our P T O. and getting one hundred percent student participation in one of the fundraising events, which earned additional money as a reward for our P T O. She has a lot of student community support here in Goshen. She has a lot of student community support here in Goshen. She coordinates the Youth and Hunger Program and has transformed that into fundraising She coordinates the Youth and Hunger Program and has transformed that into fundraising to increase the number of students to increase the number of students that we can have involved in that program that we can have involved in that program with the Weekend Backpack Program for food to go home with students that are in need. with the Weekend Backpack Program for food to go home with students that are in need. And the students within both G I S and C J Hooker volunteer to help fundraise for them. And the students within both G I S and C J Hooker volunteer to help fundraise for them. She also ran a clothing drive for winter gear for students that are in need, and she helps manage the backpack program. She also ran a clothing drive for winter gear for students that are in need, and she helps manage the backpack program. She also is one of our professional development leaders in the building. She also is one of our professional development leaders in the building. She's self taught and, I would say at this point, an expert in data mate. She's self taught and, I would say at this point, an expert in data mate. She has offered support and professional development for other staff members, and she really has taken those initiatives. She has offered support and professional development for all her staff members, and she really has taken those initiatives. She actively shares knowledge and expertise with her colleagues, not just in her grade level, but across the building. She actively shares knowledge and expertise with her colleagues, not just in her grade level, but across the building. And I think at this point, she you have around one hundred fifty, and I think it's up higher than that now, professional development hours. And I think at this point, she you have around one hundred fifty, and I think it's up higher than that now, professional development hours.
Yeah, six, seven, something. Yeah, six, seven, something.
Yeah. Yeah. So each year is around one hundred fifty. So each year is around one hundred fifty.
Yeah. Yeah.
So she's constantly learning, constantly improving. So she's constantly learning, constantly improving. And in general, not only does she do some of the clubs within the building, she supports the P T O clubs. And in general, not only does she do some of the clubs within the building, she supports the P T O clubs. I believe basketball club you've done in the past. I believe basketball club you've done in the past.
Yeah. Yeah.
Board games, Legos, math club. I know we tried to do a game club. Board games, Legos, math club. I know we tried to do a game club. Lots of different ideas and and fun things that are really enriching our students' lives. Lots of different ideas and and fun things that are really enriching our students' lives. So just in in conclusion, Ms. Ms. Bowden is certainly an asset to our building. So just in in conclusion, Ms. Ms. Bowden is certainly an asset to our building. She's dedicated. She's innovative. She's dedicated. She's innovative. I recommend her for tenure wholeheartedly without even a shadow of a doubt on this. I recommend her for tenure wholeheartedly without even a shadow of a doubt on this. And I would just say that she will bring many, many years of success and support for our students at G I S. And I would just say that she will bring many, many years of success and support for our students at G I S. You both them together or? You both them together or? Sure. Sure. All right, with that, I'll leave a motion for a Republican tenure candidate. All right, with that, I'll leave a motion for a Republican tenure candidate. All right. All right. Hi, everybody. Hi, everybody. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the tenure appointment of Nancy Bowden Being resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the tenure appointment of Nancy Bowden in the tenure area of elementary education effective March fifth, twenty twenty five. in the tenure area of Elementary Education effective March fifth, twenty twenty five. All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Hey, next up, I'd like to have Mr. Penton, the own principal of Goshen High School, come with Mr. Miles. Hey, next up, I'd like to have Mr. Penton, the own principal of Goshen High School, come with Mr. Miles.
It's my honor to introduce tenure candidate, Mr. Miles. It's my honor to introduce tenure candidate, Mr. Miles. So in my personal interactions with Mr. Miles, some words just come to mind in terms of adjectives So in my personal interactions with Mr. Miles, some words just come to mind in terms of adjectives just in ways that our students describe him and his staff. just in ways that our students describe him and his staff. Great rapport with students. He makes connections. Great rapport with students. He makes connections. We even have some of the students here this evening to support him. We even have some of the students here this evening to support him. He's a big advocate of project based learning. You go into his classroom, he's doing a podcast, project based activities, He's a big advocate of project based learning. You go into his classroom, he's doing a podcast, project based activities, always bringing out the best in his student and really at the height of student engagement. always bringing out the best in his student and really at the height of student engagement. He's a student centered educator. He's a student centered educator. You can't go throughout through the hall, as Mr. Carter said a few weeks ago, You can't go throughout through the hall, as Mr. Carter said a few weeks ago, without seeing fist bumps flow in Mr. Miles' direction and back and forth. without seeing fist bumps flow in Mr. Miles' direction and back and forth. The love is eminent throughout the building. The love is eminent throughout the building. He strives to connect to their everyday lives, not just knowing how they are as students, He strives to connect to their everyday lives, not just knowing how they are as students, but what makes them tick, their interests. You'll see him at games, supporting our students, activities. but what makes them tick, their interests. You'll see him at games, supporting our students, activities. And in terms of extracurricular, he goes above and beyond. And in terms of extracurricular, he goes above and beyond. Everything that Mr. Miles touches is highly effective. Everything that Mr. Miles touches is highly effective. He was a TEDx participant with over ten thousand views. Check it out if you didn't get a chance to. He was a TEDx participant with over ten thousand views. Check it out if you didn't get a chance to. And then the following iteration of TEDx, he became the host. And then the following iteration of TEDx, he became the host. And he did a great job of capturing the essence of the brick by brick theme and really capturing the essence of our Goshen community. And he did a great job of capturing the essence of the brick by brick theme and really capturing the essence of our Goshen community. He's one of our most popular evening high school tutors and also our region's review, He's one of our most popular evening high school tutors and also our region's review, works with some of our students that need the vetmo support. works with some of our students that need the vetmo support. And he has taken our mock trial program and really have continued to exceed his success at the county and section level And he has taken our mock trial program and really have continued to exceed his success at the county and section level and one of the preemptive forces in the mock trial just in 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 our community. and one of the preemptive forces in the mock trial just in 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 our community. And this year, I needed someone to do cultural diversity in terms of an advisor. And this year, I needed someone to do cultural diversity in terms of an advisor. I've worked with Fred and Fred each month. I've worked with Fred and Fred each month. I'm in a lobby and there's a different cultural event being celebrated by Mr. Miles and Ms. Elmotivar, their their co advisor. I'm in a lobby and there's a different cultural event being celebrated by Mr. Miles and Ms. Elmotivar, their their co advisor. But most important, what I like to, you know, celebrate this time of year is what the students say about Mr. Miles. But most important, what I like to, you know, celebrate this time of year is what the students say about Mr. Miles. And we we hear me all all day, but some of the students that Mr. Miles under his tutelage each and every day, And we we hear me all all day, but some of the students that Mr. Miles under his tutelage each and every day, describing him as very understanding, but not to the point where he'll let anything slide. describing him as very understanding, but not to the point where he'll let anything slide. Always real conversations in the class. Ten out of ten would recommend. Always real conversations in the class. Ten out of ten would recommend. So this student, he has a future in the L B. So this student, he has a future in the L B. Mr. Miles is a a ten out of ten rating, like a, you know, like some sort of establishment, but that's that's great for the incoming students. Mr. Miles is a a ten out of ten rating, like a, you know, like some sort of establishment, but that's that's great for the incoming students. Next student said, teacher manages to bring a smile to everyone's face no matter what. Next student said, teacher manages to bring a smile to everyone's face no matter what. So you see that emanating in the class, the smiles. And Mr. Miles is an excellent leader, So you see that emanating in the class, the smiles. And Mr. Miles is an excellent leader, a great mock trial coach, and overall a strong leader to student. He's the GOAT for academia, greatest of all times. a great mock trial coach, and overall a strong leader to student. He's the GOAT for academia, greatest of all times. And Mr. Miles has a unique way of bringing his class to life and making every student feel special. And Mr. Miles has a unique way of bringing his class to life and making every student feel special. And this was one of my favorites, the the last one. And this was one of my favorites, the the last one. This was from Mr. Henry Dong. This was from Mr. Henry Dong. Like a fire pit, Mr. Miles lights up the room with his charismatic personality, igniting passionate excitement in his students. Like a fire pit, Mr. Miles lights up the room with his charismatic personality, igniting passionate excitement in his students. His dedication is unwavering, working with students outside of the work hours and during the weekends. His dedication is unwavering, working with students outside of the work hours and during the weekends. You know Mr. Miles cares about us and we care about him. You know Mr. Miles cares about us and we care about him. I can give no higher recommendation, tenure Mr. Fred Miles. Let's give him a round of applause. I can give no higher recommendation, tenure Mr. Fred Miles. Let's give him a round of applause.
Do you have the motion to call the appointment of tenure candidate? Do you have the motion to call the appointment of tenure candidate? And we have everybody. And we have everybody. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the tenure appointment Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the tenure appointment of Fred Miles in the tenure area of Social Studies, effective March first, twenty twenty five. of Fred Miles in the tenure area of Social Studies, effective March first, twenty twenty five. All those in favor? All those in favor? Congratulations. Congratulations. This time, I'd like to make a motion for a group to congratulate candidates. This time, I'd like to make a motion for a group to congratulate candidates. Ashley and Brett, all those in favor? Ashley and Brett, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. All right. Post. Post. All right. Thank you, Freddie. We'll be back shortly. All right. Thank you, Freddie. We'll be back shortly.
Ready? In motion to reconvene the meeting. All right, moving on to our next item. Okay, very good. And then moving forward into the presidential board, just a few things to talk about tonight. Don't normally talk emails that we receive, but I just wanted to bring this one up. Brett and myself received the emails at the DOE comments email, and we all have our own personal emails. And recently, we received an email from a group of GIS students, which was concise, took a point with some requests and concerns, some supporting evidence, and super polite. And it was one of the best emails we've received. We responded, and Dr. Coats responded, and like most emails we get there, really not in the purview of the board. And the building admin responded. And I just wanted to say to those students, if you're listening or families, great job. It's always fantastic to hear from students, whether it's here or via email. So just great job to all those kids reaching out and, you know, self advocating. It was really, really wonderful to see. So just bridging into that a little bit, you know, we had a group here. Just mentioned those emails, and similar to, I tried to give reminders once in a while. When folks do speak in public and we do receive those emails, they filter through the parties that are supposed to reply. And very often, it's either building leadership or district leadership that gets back to folks. And then very typically, Dr. Coats follows up with the board. Should it be a student matter or any other matter, it informs of the follow-up that was had. So, you know, just tying that into what happens after you speak and send your emails and how that works. Another thing I just wanted to point out tonight, there's actually a little update to the code of conduct. This is lots of little updates here and there that, you know, folks might see and wonder what's going on. So very often in the policy committee meetings, we're receiving our policies that are coming, you know, directly from at NISBA. And they're pretty much laid out following state guidelines. And a lot of times, we're just really focusing on getting the alignment. So when something comes up and we see a language, if we think about how it might fall into play in the code of conduct, we try to add that language in. So that's been happening from time to time. I just wanted to point that out. That the purpose of that is really to create a little bit of alignment and continuity with some of the documents that we establish in Chaparral, if you will. Lastly, one other point, I just wanted to say a quick thank you. It's that time when coaching is assigned, and often there's a list of volunteer coaches. Around the corner is the Odyssey to Mine competition, and we have so many volunteer coaches. And it just makes me think and reflect. I'm thankful for all of those folks in our community who are volunteering their time, whether it be on the PTO, or a booster club, or a parent organization, or coaching, that are just volunteering their time to just better the lives of our students. Just want to say thank you. Well, so much gets done with all the folks, so thanks. Now, who's my report? Moving on to the next agenda item here. Dr. Curtis Coats with the superintendent's report. Oh yeah, I'm ahead of myself. There we go. All right. So backing up a little bit, thank you, Dr. Coats. Are there any board member committee updates, reports, legislative or Oxford reports to share? Very good, all right. And as expected, everybody had enough time to read the policies, all right, as presented here. Wonderful. So now to the next appropriate agenda item. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, sir. So as a follow-up from our last meeting, on the agenda for tonight for your consideration is the adoption of 2025-2026 school calendar. Just wanted to go through that piece by piece to make sure that I worked together with Mr. Farrell to make the appropriate changes, highlighting specifically some of the items that we discussed last time. First day of school for students will be on September 3rd. We'll maintain a half-day early dismissal in November, the day before Thanksgiving. It'll be a full two-week recess over the December-January holiday. In February, for the new lunar New Year President's Day holiday, we will have Monday the 16th and Tuesday the 17th off. Moving down to April, we will have the day after the Easter holiday off, which will be April 6th. Then we also placed another day off, as was similar to the calendar for this year, the day before the Memorial Day weekend, which would give us a total of 184 school days with two conference days for a total of 186 days, essentially giving us four emergency closing days. So I just wanted to make sure that was what the board wanted before we move forward, so we didn't have to be getting modifications.
Did align with the Volde Bosse's calendar. I already talked about that last meeting.
So there are some districts this year that are still considering trying to fit in a full week in February. To be honest, amongst the Orange Ulster Bosse's districts were split. So I think there are going to be some that are going to be similar to Goshen, and there are going to be some that are going to have a full week off. But it is Orange Ulster Bosse's intent based on the majority to try to have school for those days. All right, I'm going to segue into budget, and I'll give Mr. Dan Plaumber a chance to get set up. But there were a few things I wanted to go back to in terms of the planning process for 2025-2026 in terms of the budget. There have been some questions regarding budgeted items for specially-designed instruction for multi-century reading. I went back with Mr. Carter and pulled out what we had invested actually over the last two years. So for the 2023-2024 school year, in terms of training and special professional development for our teachers, we'd invested $6,700 in terms of sending our teachers to a wide variety of different specially-designed instruction programs. Just to mention a few, Art Gillingham, Wilson, Foundations, Faster Word, System 44, Read 180. Linda Budwell, we did a large training this past year, and some more individual ISMA Art Gillingham training for some of our teachers. Moving that into this year, and we're only at the midpoint of this year, our total expenditures for this year have been $14,296 in terms of training for our staff. In the current version of the 2025-2026 proposal, we had not touched any of our professional development lines, which would allow us to continue to support any of those initiatives. And those trainings for teachers, that's specifically where that money came from. But I just wanted to revisit that, because I know that was a question that had come up last time. Specifically, in the presentation that you're going to hear from Mr. Dan Plaumber tonight, there was also a question on efficiencies. She has added a slide on some of the work that we have done in terms of trying to cull down into the budget where we can be most scrupulous of being wise with our spending in the budget, as we know we're going to be faced with some challenges for this year. So with that, Ms. Plaumber, I'm going to turn it over to you to present for the board tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Coats. So tonight is really just a recap of our presentation from the last board meeting. And as Dr. Coats mentioned, there are some efficiencies in here, and I'll go into those as we move. So balancing our fiscal responsibility while providing quality education is definitely challenging this year. You can see we do have a budget gap of $5.3 million. That $5.3 million does not include appropriating fund balances. This year, we appropriated some fund balance to balance the budget, and we can use that same amount next year or an additional amount. But I don't include it up here because this is the net result of our revenues and our general salaries at this time. But now we have to roll up our sleeves, so to speak, on what we can do to reduce our expenditures, because we don't anticipate any additional aid. If we were to receive any, it would be minimal amount, and we do not know what that would be. So hopefully, we can first when they end up in the budget at the state level. So here is a list of our increases and decreases similar to the last presentation, except I have included a few additional items as well. We have our contract salaries at $2.2 million. The Bosse's capital project, this is the last year for that increase in that line item for their project costs. And so it will level out in '26-'27. For now, we do have an increase in this line of $302,000. Our Bosse's placements, I spoke about these at the last meeting. We do have 24 incoming special ed students, and that's increasing our placements a little over $1.6 million, as well as our private placements, $213,000. We did have some money left in our E-Rate funds. We did do a project last year, and we have a little over $65,000 E-Rate is funding from the federal government that we get dollar for dollar. But we do not get the reimbursement back until the following year. So you'll see this revenue in the '26-'27 projected budget. But for now, we don't want to leave this money on the table. We want to use it to upgrade our switches in different areas of the district. Our security software, I mentioned this as well. That's due to the cyber attack, and this is helpful for us for protecting the district. And that's $110,000. But net of Bosse's aid, which it is Bosse's able, excuse me, our net cost is just under $40,000. Employee benefits, that also increases every year because the salaries increase so too to our benefits, whether it be the teacher's retirement system, employee's retirement system, bike expense, and health and dental insurance. So we have increases totaling $5.2 million in the expenditure side of the budget. But at the same time, we're going through and trying to make decreases as well. Right off the bat, we know we have breakage. That's the amount of difference between current staff, which we have eight teachers retiring, and one guidance counselor. And when we budget for incoming replacements, we use an average of step five with 30 credits and their benefits. And that's where this comes out as a breakage amount of $566,000. Now that sometimes we can end up hiring people over step five or below step five, but that's why we use an average amount here. Then we have buildings and grounds vehicles. We have paused replacement vehicles for next year, so there's a reduction. Judgments, tax refunds, and unemployment lines, as well as our other employment benefits under retirement, they see the $515,000. These I've all determined that we can utilize our reserves for next year, so that's why those have been reduced in the budget. And then our Bosse's transportation savings or reduction this year is $141,000. But I know you had asked what the amount we have been saving in '24-'25, and that comes to $653,000. So rather than going through the contractor that Bosse's uses, we are now transporting these students in-house or in-district, and that's our savings. Computer software, Mr. Redeker, Sir Surratt went through, and well, there's a program that they use to see who and how much we're using different softwares. And right now, we've been able to reduce this line item by $12,900. This is still a work in progress. We may be able to reduce this even further in the next few weeks. Legal fees, I've just reduced that line by $25,000. The transfer to lunch fund I've also reduced, but that's based upon Governor Hochul's proposal to have universally free meals. If that does not pass the state budget, we would have to consider putting this back into our budget to make up that difference. And then various lines we've gone through for supplies, other contract items, and come up with a reduction of $270,000 based on historical data over the past four years. So our reductions come to $1.7 million. And just as a reminder, we did remove $760,000 out of last year's budget for purchase of buses. We were purchasing them with cash there for a little while. So we've also paused any equipment purchases for buses as well for this year. And then if the board decides to move forward with the capital project, that would be about $1.2 million. So district-wide efficiencies, as you asked last board meeting, we wanted to make a list for you of the different efficiencies, some I just spoke about, but here are some more. We did bring in Agent Bean Consulting to review our school lunch fund program, to see if there were any efficiencies we could find or ways that we could promote sales or meals, increase meals and the other snack items and whatnot. They also looked at staff efficiencies as well when they were here. We also brought in a company to review our transportation program. And this also resulted in a savings, as I spoke about, with the district doing their own transportation or our own transportation for our special education students. That total is the combined amount of a little over $600,000 and the $140,000. And we reviewed the software utilization, we're to come on this. Technology and security hardware and software purchases. We've been doing these through Bosse's, and that's really brought in a large amount of Bosse's aid. It's $800,000 to $1 million in aid over the last few years. We also replaced our HR position with a non-administrative staff member, saving the district $52,000. And then we had a reduction last year in the business office of a .8 FTE, and that's around $35,000 plus benefits. And then here again is the projected enrollment. And the bottom line is we have declining enrollment. Overall, the decline over the last six years, well, five years plus the projected for next year, comes to 160 students. And when you look at these numbers, that actually is one grade level. So we do have to think about that when we're putting together this year's budget. Now, I haven't used this slide in any of the previous slide presentations, but I thought it would be helpful for you to see how the tax levy cap is calculated. And I apologize for the way it looks. It's actually a picture of my Excel spreadsheet put into the presentation, but hopefully you can read it. So what we do, we start with the '24-'25 tax levy. That's your first line item up there. And then you multiply that by the tax base growth factor, which is provided to us by the state. Then we add in our pilot payments or payment lieu of taxes that we received for '24-'25. And then we subtract the prior year's capital exclusions or capital and any pension exclusions. And that's where that number comes in. Then you multiply that by CPI or 2%, whichever is lower. And this year's 2% is lower than CPI. And then we subtract the payment and lieu of taxes that are projected for the '25-'26 school year. And you can see there is a small difference between them. In '24-'25, we received $1.497 million, and we expect to receive less next year. And that's because one of these is falling off. And this is the last year they'll be making payments. It isn't a large number, but still makes an impact on the levy calculation. And then if we decide to, you can use available carryover. What carryover is, is the money that's left and not in full. It's another calculation that the state does. But it's what's left if you did not go up to the levy cap. So because we didn't, last year, the levy cap was 5.49, and we went to 2%. There were some carryover funds available, so I did add those in this year. And then we get to the $55.9 million number, which is just under half of a percent of an increase in the levy from the '24-'25 number, which again is at the top of the calculation. Then you would add in the exclusions for capital. What exclusions for capital include are our debt service, which is actually a net debt service. So you have heard me talk about budgeting for debt service on the non-instructural side of the budget. And we get building aid to offset that. So I have to calculate the net amount of that. We also put the number in there for the Bosse's net debt service or capital costs, which is including their project and what the aid is after that. So that's part of the capital exclusion. And also transportation, when you purchase buses, that also falls in there. And then we have to deduct the transportation aid that we receive back on those purchases. Or if you had been borrowing to buy your buses, you would use that amount, thus the aid as well. So I hope I didn't lose you guys there. I know it's a lot. So that is how we get to the levy after that with the capital exclusions. Now, at the last meeting, I think Dr. Sello or Dr. Sello, you asked about what the levy would be or what we would have to override the cap in order to support the budget without any reductions. And what I did, I included our current appropriated fund balance to calculate that amount. And that comes to 6.9% over what the .45% is of our levy cap right now. Help answer that question and what the figure would be. So for options to balance a proposed budget, and again, I feel it's a recap of the last meeting. We have options. You can increase your revenue basically by overriding the levy cap, because we aren't very limited in the amount of revenue that we can increase. And then there's the 6.9% needed to override the cap. Our current levy cap is at .45%. If we were to include capital work, because that would be part of that exclusion, the capital exclusion, so I was talking about on the tax levy calculation, our levy cap would increase from .45% to 1.84%. It wouldn't be an override. It would just be at the cap. And we can appropriate additional fund balance. Currently, we're using $1.2 million. And we can also appropriate loan reserves. As I mentioned before, we're looking at appropriating the tax cert. Any judgments or claims or unemployment, if that should increase, and the employee benefits, if that should increase over what's in the budget right now. But there are also other options to appropriate loan reserves. And then we can reduce spending. I know I mentioned in every budget, your employees are in the most expensive, your salaries, benefits. So the heaviest hitter, so to speak, in a budget would be to reduce staffing. And these are the average costs of the various positions for teaching. There's the teacher on step five, teacher assistants, teacher aides, and administrators, all with salaries and benefits as an average. So if we can combine any of those options to get to where we need to be. For the tax levy cap, I just wanted to point out that I do need to know by March 1st, because it is due March 1st. So I would have to see what your considerations are in order to complete that. And then we just have our mission statement and any questions. Last slide. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Thank you for that. I have one question. I mean, I think it was your second slide. When you showed the increases and decreases, did that number, if you take the difference, was that actually the less total? I think it was like $3.4 million compared to the beginning when you were saying like $5.1 million, that's it?
Um, no, this is included in the.
That's included in that already? Okay.
Yeah.
I thought maybe you. Oh, I guess, yeah. Found some money somewhere.
I know. Yeah, the number I was speaking of, the formula, would be appropriate.
So just in summary, the only thing I will ask the board for the next two weeks is just to contemplate and we can feedback on tax levy cap. It does not require a formal vote from the board, but we will need to know so that we can file in a timely fashion. So I would say close contact with the board on that, so that we can meet that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Dr. Coats. Moving on to our Assistant Superintendent for Business report.
Thank you. So tonight, in a few board packets, we have the financial data for the month of January. And January is, I don't find it, but we had expenditures totaling $6.9 million. We did receive a small amount of aid, and that was the lottery aid, $146,000. Our star reimbursement money did come in though, and that was $1.8 million. And our interest revenue was $92,000. Our total expenses through the end of January were $43.9 million, and that's 48% of our budget. And we're halfway through the year, so that's about in line with where we should be. And we earned $69.2 million for 76.4% of our anticipated revenue. And that number will jump up because we will start receiving more state aid in March. And then we also received the reimbursement of taxes from the counties, so you'll see that go up in March as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, now for our Assistant Superintendent for Instruction Personnel and Technology report, Mr. Jason Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. We're just going to take a moment to get set up on the podium side of the table. One more.
I figure we'll just rotate through. All right, thank you. So a few weeks back, there was a request to talk about the Goshen Central School District. So a few weeks back, there was a request to talk about the Goshen Central School District Academic Intervention Services Program, of course, district wide. Uh, and so for us to do that, we would first have to begin to talk about, um, multi-tiered system of supports leading into academic intervention services. So together collaboratively, we put together, building by building, our approach. Uh, and we'll begin just with a brief introduction to AIS and MTSS, so that we're all on the same page moving forward. So if you look at, uh, the definition of academic intervention services, it is provided by the New York State Education Department. And for us, we think of academic intervention services as our supplemental services that truly is in addition to what we offer with the core curriculum and all the chosen materials that we use with the core curriculum in the, in the classroom environment. There are, uh, two components, as you see there. Uh, and for us, the most important piece of it all is that academic intervention services really is designed to, to remediate any deficiencies that we may have found through our data analysis within the classroom beyond, of course, at the MTSS table. Uh, and our goal is to make sure that we're moving our students with known deficiencies now toward achieving proficiency level within all of the standards. And so our academic intervention services, uh, there are different tiers of services beginning in the classroom. Uh, there is a continuum of services that we do discuss with our families at the beginning of the school year with our AIS orientation. And the tiers of services are really, um, decided upon with the MTSS team at each building level. And so again, if you look at the definition of the multi-tiered system of supports, um, this is everything that we utilize. It is evidence-based, it is data-driven, um, and it is on behalf of all of our students and their current levels of performance in the content areas, the core content areas. But MTSS is rather all-encompassing because it includes RTI, which is the academic focus, but moves beyond into the social, emotional, um, and students' physical needs, behavioral needs, uh, and of course, any mental health needs that may exist. So we've chosen to move into MTSS, not away from RTI, but rather including RTI in MTSS at our tables. So each of our teams, um, discusses what we can do as that more comprehensive approach to really address the individual needs of all of our students, uh, both academically, socially, emotionally, and beyond. So you see here a, a little diagram, uh, really of the, the actual process, but more importantly, we talk about what our goals are. So the goal is to identify our students' needs, all of their needs, rather quickly. We want to be as proactive as we can. We want to look at their needs, we want to identify them, and we want to be able to support our students to close down any gaps and deficiencies and support them as they move forward as quickly as possible. We, we're always hopeful that by taking this proactive approach as quickly as possible, that we reduce the need for our students to move through the tiers to the higher levels and then even beyond possibly into, um, CSE with consideration for special education services. And so as I had mentioned, we do have three tiers, um, or levels of services here within the MTSS framework. We've given you a couple of small pieces that will be touched upon in greater detail by each of our building level principals. If you just look at the diagram, we try to break it down just to give you a general idea of the percentage of students that might need these tiers of services as they move through the MTSS framework. Uh, and so tier one is, is really important to us because all students, um, receive tier one services of the classroom setting. And this is really designed to, um, quickly take a look at any of our students' needs, provide them some differentiated instruction or whatever other support that they may need in that classroom environment, so that we can avoid moving to tier two and tier three. Uh, again, some of our principals will probably add in, but, you know, we anticipate that as you move through your tier one services in the classroom general setting, we usually see or hope to see eighty to ninety percent of our students, um, making appropriate growth within that tier one setting. As you move on to tier two, you see that we, we talk about, um, approximately five to fifteen percent of our students requiring, uh, more intensive tier two. And so i- if five to fifteen percent of our students need this level, we, we don't want our groups to be very large. And again, our principals will talk about the size of their groups in, in their individual buildings, but we're talking about groups of maybe four to eight. We don't really want to get into double digits. And when you think about, um, frequencies and, and durations, it may be anywhere from one to three days per week. Uh, and again, we hope that our students make adequate progress there, that we can close down any gaps or known deficiencies, address any behavioral or, or social, emotional needs and avoid moving into a, a more intense tier three service. If we do in fact have to move our students to a tier three service, um, when you get there, we anticipate that maybe one to five percent of our students would require, uh, tier three services because it is rather intense support service. Again, when you talk about, um, a service of this intensity, again, you want rather small groups. So we anticipate that we would keep our groups between one and three students and the frequency of meetings, uh, would be more. So it may be every day or it may be four days, but it most certainly would not be just one day. And so now I'll invite our principals, um, by grade and by building level, um, to come up to the podium and, and just discuss with you what their academic intervention service programs look like, building by building. Ms. Driscoll, please.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry if my voice cracks and getting over something. Um, so at Scottstown Avenue, uh, our team that meets, um, for every MTSS meeting consists of myself, Mrs. Cruz, our assistant principal, uh, Mrs. Deirdre Markelini, one of our AIS teachers, um, and Miss Carrie Eschbacher, who's our school psychologist. Depending on which students we're talking about and what classroom, um, we're participating with, we'll have our classroom teachers, any of the special education educators or support services, um, and any AIS service providers that work with them. Um, and if we are talking about something like occupational therapy or speech services, uh, we would invite those, uh, service providers to come to those meetings as well. Three times yearly, we meet for universal screening meetings where we review all of our students. These happen concurrently with our MAPS testing. So when we do our MAPS testing in October, um, January, and then in June, we meet with the full committee. Each teacher comes down and we review the data from the NWA, uh, NWDA MAPS for ELA and MAP. Teachers will then bring down their classroom data as well, which consists of our scholastic reading benchmark, which is the NSGRA. In kindergarten, we use the reading readiness and first grade, uh, reading readiness assessment from Scholastic, uh, which is actually their assessment that looks at their pre-reading skills. So it looks at their letter identification, phonemic awareness, um, and, uh, their concepts about print. So how do they work with books and how do they understand those print concepts? Uh, we'll look at grade level math assessments. So, um, our grade level each work together to develop, uh, universal, uh, chapter assessments that they use in connection with the math and focus. Uh, so we'll look at those for their math. In addition to that, we look at their early numeracy, um, skills. So that will look at row counting, one-to-one correspondence, uh, numeral formation, numeral identification. Um, and we'll look at that information. Um, and then for incoming kindergarten students, we also look at at the beginning of the year, their DILEF four, uh, which is the screening that we do during their kindergarten screening that they conduct before they come to school. Uh, all of this information is given to all of our students and we look at this information throughout the year so that we can track progress. It's a way for us to make the determination if students are on the right trajectory and that they are making the progress that we would expect them to make. It also allows us to, uh, be mindful and to really look at how our teachers are, uh, going with our core instruction. If we see any dips, we're able to address that, uh, in those meetings. Uh, weekly, we hold MTSS meetings throughout the year. During these meetings, these are, um, driven by teacher referrals. So if there is a student that is not making the, uh, is not making the project, uh, the progress that we would expect, a teacher, either a classroom teacher, an AIS provider, a counselor, school psychologist can, uh, make a recommendation to bring a child up to the MTSS team. Each of the teachers would fill out a form that would allow them to identify, uh, the area of concern. Um, and then that way we can invite any of the service providers that would be able to bring their knowledge about the topic to there. So if they have, uh, a concern about, uh, ELA, we would invite one of our ELA, uh, AIS providers to come for math. Or if there was a behavioral concern, we would bring, uh, one of our behavior consults or we would bring in our school psychologist or the social worker to help with that. And then during that time, we look at our universal screening data. We also look at our classroom assessments, um, any data that they may be tracking. So if we have an intervention that's in place, we would look at that data during that time. And then any anecdotal data that the classroom teacher may have through their observations or just what they're noting in the classroom. At those meetings, it's really a collaborative conversation. So we look at that more of like, um, trying to find a, a approach to the problem where we can try to solve it, using our different tiers of interventions. So our tier one interventions are really our core instruction. So that's the instruction that all of our students are getting. It's scholastic, uh, the resources that we use, it's all standard based, based upon the New York State standards. Uh, but the resources that we use are scholastic literacy, uh, foundations, uh, math in focus, project lead the way and choose love, which I think may have gotten cut off at the bottom for our, uh, social, emotional curriculum. If we find that a ti- a child is not making the progress that we would expect with that tier one, uh, core instruction, then then teach, classroom teacher will put an intervention in place in the classroom. And then we would meet at our MTSS meeting where we would review how the child is doing with that type of intervention. If we believe that they are not making the progress that we would expect and that they need additional support, uh, then they would move into tier two, which is our, uh, strategic instruction. This can be in the form of ELA support, it can be in the form of math support. We have social, emotional support through our counselors and social workers. Um, and then we also, um, provide some support through, uh, discussion or speech or, um, some types of those supports should we feel a child needs that. Uh, the resources that we use in ELA are the Level Literacy Intervention or LLI, um, Hegarty, uh, foundations, Fast Forward, teacher-created resources, uh, scholastic decodable readers and decodable short reads. So those would be what your child would be exposed to if they were in that, uh, tier two instruction. In math, we use, uh, the Bridges Math Curriculum, IXL, Touch Math and other teacher-created resources. For social, emotional support, that's really, um, tiered to the child's needs. So depending on what they may need, a lot of that is really driven by our counselors and our social worker and our school psychologists. Their expertise in the area would really develop into the plan that they would use for that tier two instruction. After a child is in tier two, if we believe that they are not making the, uh, the progress that we would expect, whether or not it's based on our universal screening data or if, um, a child is brought up by an AIS provider or a classroom teacher, then we would explore some tier three resources, which would be our intensive instruction. The resources that you see in tier three would be very similar to those that are in tier two. We're really looking at changing the frequency and duration of the groups so that we are really making those group sizes smaller or increasing the frequency in which they're being seen by the providers. In addition, we would increase the amount of progress monitoring we were doing at that time to make sure that we are really looking into specific skills that the students need. So we're really targeting those foundational skills in hopes that the instruction that we put in place during that time will help make those gains and help us identify where we really feel like the child needs more support. In addition to that, uh, resources that we have here, um, we have the Level Literacy Intervention, Multi-Sensory Approach to Language Instruction, um, Hegarty, Fast Forward, the Teacher Created Resources, Scholastic Decodables. And then in math, we use, uh, the very similar, uh, resources. Uh, for our social, emotional, we may bring in some, um, consultations or some types of positive behavior reinforcement plans or different peer groups, uh, student check-ins. So it all gets tailored even more to the child's individualized needs. This is all the information that we use so that if we do have to go for, for, uh, special education, we'll have the data to support it through the different types of interventions that we put in place. See if they have any questions.
So this is extremely helpful and I hope that this is, we can see on our website for, for access. One question that, um, we as a board have been presented with is what can we do as a district to ensure that our students aren't being pulled from some of their core classes to attend their AIS sessions? Cause you know, we recognize that the AIS sports are, um, extremely important, but, um, taking them out of their classes where they might be struggling, it's, it's kind of like a, it's a, it's a tough, tough situation. So, um, I know that there's some scheduling issues, but that is something that we keep hearing. So I, you know, I, I don't mean to put you on the place of your first, but I'm gonna be asking everyone pretty much the same question. So what can we do to help or, or what is being done since that is a concern?
So what we did this year was we really tried to look at our scheduling strategically. So in years prior, we actually had, um, each of our service providers focused on a grade level because then they became an expert in that grade level and the resources that were needed. However, that could lead to multiple pullouts for, for a teacher in her classroom where she may have, cause if you have four different kids at four different levels getting different resources, that could be very disruptive to their day and they wouldn't be able to do that. So this year, we've really been working with our service providers where they are pulling kids from the same classroom during the same blocks so that we're optimizing the amount of time where the teacher is, uh, being able to provide core instruction throughout those uninterrupted blocks during the day. So that when children are being pulled out, it is not necessarily during those most important instructional portions of their day. It also during that time, our classroom teachers are focusing on those enrichment activities for the students that are still in the classroom so that they're not missing out on new instruction. It's that during those blocks, they're able to individualize the instruction for the students that are still in their classroom. At the end of the day, there may be if a child is getting multiple AIS services, there may be something that they're missing. But I think through this, uh, through these resources and through our, um, identification, we're identifying that they need those foundational skills and they are not getting the access to the curriculum the way that other students may be getting it. So without us filling those blocks and really being able to build up those foundational skills, they're not ready for the access to the core curriculum because we've already identified that that's not working for them. So I think that while sometimes they may be missing it, the instruction that they're receiving through the AIS is really valuable for them. So that in hopes that we can close those gaps and that they will be able to spend more time in the classroom getting that.
So along those lines, one of the, uh, some of the feedback that we've had also is, uh, only StarTAC academic intervention services, right? So soon this might not be seen, uh, you know, all the month of September now. Whether it's true or not, we don't know, this is just the feedback we had. So, um, knowing that you're working on this and your identity, I'll ask everyone the same question. What is the ideal timeline for you as administrator for those academic intervention services to start?
So ideally, we do want to start by the end of September. It's hard, I think, my grade level's a little bit different because they're so young. We don't want to start them the first day of school coming in doing those, those assessments. And we really use that information from the universal screening, um, to make the determination for those groupings. I will say at our June universal screening, so when the kids take their assessments at that June NWEA, um, I sit down with our AIS providers and we identify students that are in tier three and tier two from the previous year. So those students who we've identified in June, that we know there was already those gaps, we make a list of those students and those students get started with the second week of school. So our students that are the most needy students that are in that tier three get started with the second week of school. Um, the students that we're newly identifying or they may be on that cusp where we're like, oh, maybe they'll need it this year, maybe they, maybe they may not. Or new students that come up to us, they may have a little bit of a later start date because we are using the data that we received from the benchmarks and from those NWEAs. But we do, those media students do get started with right away. And this year, we did use the beginning of our year where the teachers had like a little bit more flexibility in their schedule to start with Hegarty in our kindergarten classrooms because we know that those phonemic awareness skills are so important. So we're trying to use those teachers and their skill set to a broader range of students before they have those full case loads. So that we're optimizing that amount of time that they're there. So it's not wasted time, it's just that we're redeploying our resources someplace until we can use the data and information that we get from those assessments to make those decisions wisely.
And seeing that you've been piloting Hegarty, um, in the kindergarten, uh, do you anticipate the expansion of Hegarty through the lower elementary?
So obviously, that's not my decision to make solely. Um, I will say that the data that we are receiving from our universal screening, our students are making really nice gains in their phonemic awareness. Um, and it will be a conversation that I would, I would love to have moving forward. I think that it has been beneficial to our, um, grade level as a whole. Um, but that's a collaborative decision that I would have with, um, Mr. Carter and the Board of Education before we made any decisions about, uh, really putting those types of curriculums in place.
And, and no, I only asked that question because we're in the middle of developing a budget. So that's something where if, i- if we're moving that way, that's obviously something that would be extremely, in my opinion, beneficial to put into a budget where we're having presentation with a large gap already, but if we're looking to bring our learners up to speed so they don't get behind as they move through the continuum of everyone, all the administrators here. So that, that's the only reason why I asked about Hegarty, I don't want to butt out in May like, hey, let's move forward to a budget.
The nice thing about Hegarty is that the, um, it's really like financially sound. There's not a large, um, cost to go into it in the beginning. Um, so I'm sure it's something that we'll talk about soon.
Thanks.
And I just had a question about, do you have a, a rough estimate of what percentage of students that are in tier three currently?
I, I think, I don't know it off the top of my head, but I can definitely get the numbers, and I can, I can give you our numbers. Um, we just redid our universal screenings and just did our updates, so I'm not sure exactly where it is. Um, typically, we have in E L A, I don't want to misquote, I'll email you and I'll let you know exactly what our universal.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening again. So we're very similar, well said by, um, Mr. Skoll, we're very similar to S A S at G I S. Um, this team is the team that just currently has been doing a lot of the work, and I will give a shout out to Miss Cruz, who's done a lot of alignment between the two buildings, and getting our M T S S process really similar between the buildings. There's obviously some differences when we get up to third through fifth grade. Uh, so this team has been working on really making it fit and making it work for the building. So we'll go to the next slide. Uh, so again, very similar to S A S, we are doing the three times a year for the universal screening meetings. We are collecting a little bit different data, some of it's the same. Um, so we have the N D A map testing, we use the N S G R A through Scholastic. Uh, we also have been using the Scholastic reading measure, which is giving us a little bit quicker of a, uh, data point for our students' reading. Uh, we are using I X L more and more as we're learning how to access and utilize the different reports in there. Um, and of course, we are using the state assessments, uh, but we are also really happily relying on Datamate, um, which allows us to break down those state assessments into individual students, classes, uh, standards, and it really gives us a lot of insight as to how a student is doing. Um, along with that, and I didn't include it on here, uh, several of our grade levels are really using Datamate now to give assessments for grade level assessments in class, and that's also giving us a lot of really good information on how a student is doing compared to their grade level. Uh, so again, we review all of the students with the teachers in the classroom, um, and we do take that time to try to understand who needs to go into A I S, who can come out of A I S, um, and if there's additional interventions needed, um, even to the point of looking at the social emotional piece of it. Um, our M T S S meetings are pretty much identical to what you're seeing at S A S. Um, again, it can be initiated by anybody, um, including administrators. We sometimes see things that we need to discuss and work through, especially around behavioral and S E L concerns. Uh, we do review the needs of the students. Uh, we just, with that team, just implemented a brand new, um, warm referral form that is helping us streamline the, the speed in which we're doing the meetings, and also getting the interventions in place, uh, for that M T S S piece. Uh, and again, these are collaborative, it depends on what the meeting is for, who we invite in, but we usually get as many people as we can with the minimum disruption to the educational process as possible. Uh, we broke ours up into a couple of different areas, and this was really because of the needs we had at G I S, trying to make sure there was an understanding of classroom-based interventions versus the A I S teachers and their interventions. Uh, so at the classroom level for E L A and math, um, you can, I'm not going to read every piece to you, but as you can see, we have our basics for E L A, our scholastic literacy, and our foundations. That is our guaranteed curriculum for everybody in E L A. And then at tier two, in the classroom, we can go up to utilize some of the tools that we have available to us. Um, you can see if there's something that we're just starting to implement it, uh, which is just words in the fourth and fifth grade. Um, there's still some trainings and some, some pieces we're trying to put in place with that one. Uh, one of the really nice things though, is that allows us up to fifteen students in a group, um, and still be considered a tier two intervention. Uh, and then at math, we're same as math focus. And that in the classroom, again, we can increase I X L, we can increase our small group instruction with students. Um, and we've been piloting a few other programs after school to see how that might support our students in that as well. And then for our A I S interventions, this has been an ongoing project that we're trying to really map out what interventions we are providing. Uh, we still include tier one on this part for our, our A I S, because that is where the monitoring is still occurring. Uh, for the most part, we are still pulling all of the different data points. Um, they are, as A I S teachers, keeping in close contact with our classroom teachers to see what's going on in the assessments in the classroom, but also across what's going on in I X L. What are we seeing in the Datamate assessments? Uh, tier two and three is really where A I S lives most of the time. So in the L A, we are starting to get our, um, I guess, our repertoire of different interventions that we can choose from. We're hoping to shift more towards grouping based on these interventions as opposed to just pulling groups out of classrooms. Um, and then at tier three, essentially, we're doing the same interventions, but it's going to be reducing group size, increasing the frequency. Um, and math has been actually one that's been a little bit more difficult to find some good research-based interventions, but we are using Bridges. Uh, we just purchased and are piloting, uh, P A Ls, which is peer assisted learning strategies in math. Um, if that goes well, we may expand that out a little bit more as well, just as a intervention for our students in need. Uh, and again, they're, they're doing the small groups and skills. Uh, what I will mention as, as this goes on is we, for this part, we haven't put on the S E L, um, pyramid, but we have been working on some really great projects. Um, Kaylee Van U and our counselor has put in place for tier two now, the peer, um, mentoring program, not peer mentoring, sorry, adult mentoring program, uh, where they're basically assigned to an adult. So when we have students that just need that extra support, beginning, middle, end of day, whatever it is, um, those students are assigned to an adult, which kind of saves her a little bit on having to take on so many of the tier three discretionary counseling. And that's our hope, is that we can continue to move students into a lower tier as we go, or they move up if they need that extra support. Um, so we also kind of put this little piece together, because it's been an ongoing conversation in G I S about how we enter A I S. Um, it used to be a little bit more haphazard. Uh, in the last few years, this is kind of what has developed. So we often talk about data, we talk about the idea that we have to triangulate that. We can't just take one data point, one test in the middle of nowhere and use that to make a decision. So we're using multiple data points over time, making sure it's not just a fluke that a, a child did poorly or did well. Um, that's actually a need that's happening there. Uh, so again, current students with no prior A I S, you can kind of see, we're looking at all those different pieces. Our starting point is always the map test, but that is not the end all and me all, it's just our starting point. Um, and so we look at anybody who's twentieth percentile or below, which is where you drop from below average to below average. Um, and of course, if there's students that are a little bit above that with other weak areas, they would also be looked at to be picked up as well. Uh, of course, we're looking at New York State assessments, report cards, same as the, uh, universal screenings essentially. Uh, if they're current students and they've had prior A I S, uh, we do believe in that idea that students can come in and out of A I S, and should come in and out of it as needed. Uh, so we're getting a little bit more fluid with that. Uh, so it's a little bit easier to get back into A I S, and really the A I S teachers are watching the, um, the, the last few tests. So if a student kind of graduates out of A I S, and then they start to struggle without their crutches, we bring them back in. Kind of the easiest way to say, and they're, they're looking at at least a couple of data points and teacher recommendation. Uh, we also have really outlined new entrance, because we get quite a bit of new students coming in throughout the year. Uh, so if we can get data or any reports from the prior district, we'll pull those and look at those. Uh, we'll often talk to parents, and then we do screenings. We do like a mini map assessment, there's a smaller screening version we can give. Uh, and then as we go, we also are giving I X L as well as what the classroom teacher sees. So if they don't get picked up right away, and then we see an issue, they will be pulled in pretty quickly. Uh, and then the, the last piece that we've been talking through is when to bring E N L students in, um, especially if we have a, uh, newcomer student who's coming in with very, very limited English. We're trying to figure out at that point where they fall within their native language, um, and that at what point we pull them out of the classroom as opposed to keeping them in the classroom, in which, which is better for them at the time being. Uh, so we're having those ongoing conversations, and we try to keep them in the classroom until we know for sure it's an academic issue, and not purely a, a language-based issue from a, a different background. I think that was all I have to, can't remember. So any questions for G I S?
So, as, as promised, I have the same question, um, and Mr. Skoll really did address it, um, and I'm not sure if you have anything to add to that. I will say that I feel like most of the, um, questions that we get about it are really kindergarten through, um, the G I S events. Once, we don't seem to be seeing as many questions in, in C J Hooker and the high school, but it's definitely something that is a concern of parents, um, in K through, uh, five.
Yeah, so in terms of scheduling, um, the last two years, we have been implementing a, um, I don't know what we're calling it, it's an intervention session, it's a half hour day. The reality is, we really could use like a lot more time every day, uh, but we're trying to schedule that half hour in. It has been a challenge, because, uh, the new curriculum, which has been helpful and has been great, but there's always that like break-in period of trying to get it in and second nature for the teachers. Um, they've had to utilize a lot of that time to kind of go over things with the bigger groups of kids. Uh, so sometimes when we're pulling out during those intervention slots, the kids are still kind of missing some of the instruction because of that adjustment period that's happening. Uh, this is the second year we've had that in place. I think we're doing a little bit better this year, and we're hoping that we can continue trying to push that piece. And just like Ms. Triskel said, we're trying to get the groups more centered around, like, kind of like the skills that are needed, and having them push in at those times. But again, if you have a half hour for, let's say, half of third grade, uh, and you've got a kid that needs both math and reading, at that point, you're kind of stuck where you're going to have to pull out of somewhere else. Uh, there's just not another option available to us. Uh, some of the teachers, I will say, go way above and beyond, and do pull them during certain times like recess, but you know, you don't want to take a kid on recess too often either. Uh, so it's a, it's a tough balance on how we manage that time, uh, but we're actively looking at it constantly.
Just a question, have you, knowing that half hour is not enough time, have you looked at like an hour block?
So it's, in order to do that, we would have to give something else up. Uh, we're at a point right now where we've got ninety minutes for E L A planned in, sixty minutes for math, and then we're kind of cheating science and social studies a little bit more than we'd like to. It, we're getting it in, uh, but it's still not as much time as we'd like to really dedicate to it. So at that point, if we took any more time out, it would take away from one of those. Uh, so it's, you know, the time is one of those commodities that we have, and we have to use what we have, we can't create more of it. So we're just trying to get as creative as we can within what we have.
Uh, and, and also the same question, um, what's the timeline for the start of academic intervention services at the beginning of the year?
So again, kind of similar, uh, we take the recommendations from the prior year, and we try to get them started. By about the second week, we start with some of the students. Uh, there is a little bit of a balance there, because we are also tasking our A I S team to get all of the data collected on students, as well as really formalizing the scheduling. Um, and anyone that's been in the elementary levels know that scheduling A I S is like a free-for-all sometimes, and we're trying to get it more and more set. There's still that piece, like when you have a kid that is needing two different services, and they might also be receiving speech, and they might, they OT, those are the things that kind of throw us for a loop still. So that's where they're spending those first few weeks really making sure we can get a formalized schedule, but they're also seeing the kids that are really needing to be seen as quickly as they can. So, and then we just make the adjustments after the universal screening.
Okay, so, so by the second week, the, 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 the students who are any of here that we know are, are most vulnerable, that are coming in, that we know are going to be, you know, the tier two, tier three, we, we know that they're sort of hearing, sort of hearing regression here. No, they're, they're not increasing. So it's safe to say that in G I S, the second week, they're starting to.
Yeah, so what I would say is tier three is definitely being seen. Tier two is being seen where they know that there's a greater need. Um, and then they're, they're balancing their time to also meet as a team to try to get the scheduling. So there's a little bit less full meeting, but by the end of September, our goal is to have the full schedule up and running, even though that's probably going to be different than what we started with.
Thanks.
Yeah.
And I have the same question as well about how many students are in tier three or considered tier three?
Yeah, I would, it would be a, a little bit of a guess, but I know that tier three is probably pretty close to the upper end of like five percent right now. Um, we're seeing a little bit more in math right now than in the L A, but I don't have the exact numbers right now. Anything else? Thank you.
Hello, good evening. So, um, for our first slide, um, this just tells us who our team members are at school. It is a little bit different when you do reach middle school. I have to say thank you to the elementary who does a lot of the heavy lifting in the beginning. Um, so by the time our students get into sixth grade, the middle school is slightly different, because six is still considered elementary. So we have that whole, um, just atmosphere where we're still following the K six with the scholastic and the math, and then we have our seven eight. So to just jump ahead, um, we can go to the second slide. This shows our tier services, it's quite like the others, um, but we're using our tier one, which is most of our students. Um, at this point, I would say the first, to answer the question before it comes, um, most of our students, we already know who's going to be coming in for the tier three and tier two, because we're using the scores from the year before, from fifth grade. So we're using those to drive our schedule, um, for the upcoming academic year. And then the beauty about the secondary is that we don't have to pull them out, it's already built in the schedule. So I know I'm answering ahead of time, but I can take anything after, I'm sorry. Um, so this, this explains our tiers, but I wanted you to have that portion so that you know it's already built into the schedule. There are always students that come in throughout the year, or maybe throughout the summer. They need some of those testing, or they need that testing done, or we're not receiving all of the information from the previous school. We might need to look into it, so we may have about a two-week gap, but everyone should be up and running in tier three and tier two, starting in September. There may be a slight gap, like I said, if someone's coming in from a newcomer, and someone's coming in from another school. But that is, that's how a middle school schedule is set up. Most kids are in the tier one, as we spoke about. Um, I don't believe that I see it up there, but excuse me, I have on my glasses. And the, um, we also use our counselor, our, our school psychologist, our social worker when it comes to the S E L. We're using our, those are activities, our choose love. We do a lot of experience, the student recognition. Then when we're coming into the tier two, most of that is where our A I S is. And those are broken down also into E L A. And those are broken down also into ELA and into math. We have our our counselors that help along that to see. We do have the in and out, kind of how Dr. Wenworth was speaking. We have a lot of students who, by the time they get to us, are in that progress monitoring. And then they find out a lot of times, sixth grade is a very heavy lift from fifth to sixth. They're no longer, you know, holding their hands, walking down the hallway. It's a little bit different, so sometimes they might need to jump back in. So that's a constant monitoring all year long. If they need to get back in, our team needs together. Most of the time it is staff driven and the teacher will notice something and say, hey, I need to, you know, bring this to the NTSS group. And then our team gets together, they need and talk about which tier they need to be in or have they seen anything drastic change between. Sometimes it might even be a phone call down to GIS. Hey, can you explain anything about this student so that we get more information? We use peer mediation as much as possible. You can see on here, I don't want to read everything for you, but and then in our tier three, which I do believe is less than five percent, but I can get you those numbers also. That is our look, that's, you know, our who needs the highest. So sometimes that be, we have to do some safety plans in there. Sometimes there's some behavioral intervention plans. That's just our very intensive group and it's not large, but we do have it. And our next slide. So some supplemental programs, materials utilized, the MTS process, AIS provided to students with through sixth through eighth grade, excuse me. Some services provided are our AIS courses. We do have the after school extra help. We do have homework club. We use a lot of the parent student conferences, referrals, guidance, committee of special ed, instructional support team and progress monitoring. So things that I've already said, if you wanted any deeper, get into that. And I think there might be one more. Yep, so we also use choose love, our maps, just like the K eight through five. This, it's not only what we use, but that is something that's very big that we look into for our ELA map. Project Lead the Way, that's up there in the whole way through six or eight. Our scholastic, our building based assessments, IXL, progress monitoring, track store, work club, international screening with our four academic features, our attendance monitoring, compliance, guidance meetings, places meetings, a ton of meetings. More follow up meetings with AIS providers and staff. And then the team communicates with parents regarding RTI referrals and follow up. So there's just a ton of meetings with it. I hope I answered all the questions, but if not. Yeah, okay. I think that's my last, my last one, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, once again. So Gushen High School, we're comprised of a diverse team of administrators, teachers, counselors for support. And it's designed not only to reach our students academically, but support the social, emotional behavior nature and and really looking at the multi-tiered system support. As Mr. Carter says, encompasses RTI. We're fortunate at the high school that we do have a lot of resources that we use each and every day, which we'll get into. And and really looking at each aspect from our, the contracts that we sign through our behavior specialists to our mental health satellite, they're fortunate enough that within our building to our ADAC specialist, which is actually my neighbor, next door, just not going to door. We utilize these sources overall for support for our students. And again, this is a school-wide approach. It's graphic, as I mentioned before, and it's really looks takes the village of our classroom teachers, department chairs, our counselors, psychiatrists, but also our administrators to really give support in this level. We'll talk about the process on the next slide. Really starting off is, you know, it's similar to the middle school where we have our scores, our our maps from the year before, our eighth grade assessments would help drive our schedule. And really starting at the beginning of the year, we have a place these students. And and again, at the secondary level, it's built into the student's schedule. So it's not a pullout model. It's built into their schedule. We're also fortunate enough to have a full continuum of support where we have not only AIS during the school day, but we have attend appearance support. We have evening high school. And then we also added in our second year, a peer tutoring program run by Morgan Town, which has been very successful. So students now may have that takeaway stigma of working from, you know, a teacher and working through the, you know, our student experts in various content areas. We're looking to even expand that to of the other levels as well, you know, from a from a middle to elementary spot. Sure. Along with that, in terms of our our process, we provide communication with parents. You know, our incoming ninth graders, we look at the math assessments and teacher recommendations for our, looking at our classroom performance at both the middle and then once they get to the high school as well, we're starting to look at, we just implemented quarterly exams. So it helps us to drill down on a deeper level how our students are doing at each benchmark level. Along with that, we're really, you know, along with other buildings, looking at IXL, but IXL diagnostic as a screening tool. In the past, we use, we heavily relied on STAR. So we transitioned STAR to a new entrance for students that were looking to test and to really have diagnostics on them. And then, of course, our students that are in need of of, you know, graduating, we're giving them extra support. We're taking more than one English classes. We're able to give them ability to work in their schedule to build in throughout their entire day. Next slide, please. And again, some supplemental materials that we use, again, along with our AIS services. Again, we have our ten appearance support, our peer tutoring, along with our evening high school, which are great for the transportation provides. We have conferences, referrals to our special ed for our tier three and then progress monitoring. So, you know, during our time, we are able to check in with students. We're able to really, you know, pull out at some times to make sure that the testing is done with fidelity. And here is broken down, I'm not going to go through all of them, but tier one, of course, looking at all of our students, but we've, you know, implemented with fidelity our new programs for anti-bullying or norms and bystander training, which has been very successful. Earlier this year, we've rolled out our our care program, communities active, referring, engaged with our threat assessment model. So we're able, really trying to build that positive culture within our building and students have taken to it great effect. We have kindness week in assemblies, a lot of the cell of initiatives that we do at the hand of our positivity club. And it's just been a great, great result in our high school. In terms of tier two, of course, our AIS evening high school, as I mentioned, layered counseling, of of and mentioned the mental health satellite as well. We do utilize like Keith Rico, our behavioral specialist, to do observe students, give reports and give feedback and make sure that we create plans and invite them to our meetings to work on our our student support right within our MTSS council center. And then again, looking at moving on to tier three, our small AIS groups. We do home visits for attendance, checking in on students, making sure that we can give them support where they need. And that's been a a huge, huge step forward in the last few years. Safety plans, a slower referrals for mental health support and referral to ADAC. Something new that we just were able to look at in terms of behavioral. We've had Too Good For Drugs that's been continuous at the elementary level, which has really blossomed to Teen Intervene. So just recently, we're looking at Too Good For Violence. And that's a program that we started to use. So students that we see are biggest offenders that are either drugs or potentially violence. And now we have two great programs, not only give them of, you know, support, gives them paths to make sure that these events don't happen in the future. Thank you. Any questions?
I'm just going to ask the same thing about how many students are in tier, are considered tier three.
Yeah, I would echo with Heather, less than five percent. And these a wider range and we're looking at academic academics, behavior and attendance. We've done a good job in each year reducing those numbers, but I'll I'll email them to you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that that's the last slide of our presentation. What I would say now is that you've probably noticed a little, a little difference there in, of course, the scheduling and some of the metrics that are used for entrance into AIS. And we would refer back to to the memo that we all get usually, hopefully in September, where it lays out a two-stage process for especially those in elementary grades three through eight because it involves the state assessment measures. And so for the twenty four, twenty five school year, schools were in fact allowed to not have to use those measures, although we do still use those. And the second stage of that is to look at every one of the data points that we had discussed earlier. When it comes to scheduling, we're very fortunate at the secondary level, as mentioned by our building level principals, because it's immediately scheduled in the summer months, right into the student's rotation. And that's very helpful. And and so that could be fluid, fluid and dynamic with new entrance coming in. There are times where students meet the metric and they they are able to move in the progression or the continuum of service out, although not very, very often, and we're not looking to push students out. But it does give us some of that flexibility. Whereas, you know, we do run into some some unique challenges at that elementary level. And the only reason that I bring that up is because my office, Dr. Coats' office, we have worked with our elementary administrators in particular to try to assist and come up with, you know, some of the outside of the box thinking to accommodate some of our students and their needs and to really try to keep them, whether it be in an extracurricular or or rather, for instance, a music program, to not miss recess, to not have to eat lunch with the AIS provider. You know, we're doing what we can to make that work. And I would also tell you that we have ongoing discussions about the master scheduling, not just at the elementary level, but moving up to continue to accommodate our students' needs. You know, you do see a rise in student needs as time goes on, but I do believe that our building level team, including our teachers and support staff, they're doing a good job of addressing those needs. We'd like to see those numbers come down, but the most important thing is that we continue to offer the necessary services to move our students forward academically, socially, behaviorally, and the health needs are taken care of and and really address the needs of the whole child. So we tried to put together a comprehensive presentation for you that hits it from every angle. I value the feedback and questions that you've asked for sure. I have extensive notes here. I think most of the questions were answered, but those that still need a response, we'll get them out through Dr. Coats, okay? Anything else? Thank you.
All right, yes, thank you, Ed Olmey, for putting together that very detailed. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, board of education, special retirement, talent, career below, teacher rate, June thirty, twenty twenty five. This Kramer Law has been with the district for forty two years. Be further resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, board of education approves the remainder of the consent agenda. All those in favor? Same. Do you and your future endeavors? To our retirement. Need a motion to approve the policy updates, second readings, renumbering, renaming, readoptions and retirements. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, board of education approves the second readings, renumbering, renaming, readoptions of the following policies as presented. All those in favor? Need a motion to approve the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six student calendar. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, board of education adopts twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six student calendar as presented. All those in favor? Need a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting. John and Ashley. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, board of education approves the minutes of February third, twenty twenty five, regular meeting. All those in favor? Opposed. Need a motion to accept the recommendations of the committee of special education and committee on preschool and special education. Billy and Brett. Be resolved with the board of education hereby arranges for the special education program services based upon the recommendations made for preschool and school age students with disabilities by the committee on preschool, special education, CPSE and committee on special education, CSE during the period December nineteenth, twenty twenty four, through and including February tenth, twenty twenty five. District and directs the districts to arrange for the provisions of said special education programs and services to such preschool and school age students with disabilities as recommended during such time period by the CPSE and CSE. All those in favor? Opposed. Need a motion to approve revisions to the code of conduct. Ashley Scott. Be resolved with the board of education revises the twenty twenty four code of conduct. Section seven, student dress code, to include the following language. Dress code will not, the dress code will not single out religious attire in general or attire of a particular religion or prohibition of regulation. If the district makes exceptions to the dress code for non-religious reasons, it will also make exceptions for religious reasons, absent of compelling interest. Students may display religious messages on items of clothing to the same extent that they are permitted to display other applicable messages. Religious messages will not be singled out or suspension, but rather are subject to the same rules as generally apply to comparable messages. All those in favor? Opposed. Need a motion to for the nomination of candidates for OU VOSI's board. John Chen. Be resolved, the board of education nominates William N. Boss, David Eden and Edwin A. Estrada for reelection to the Orange Altar VOSI's of Cooperative Educational Services. All those in favor? Opposed. Need a motion to approve the audit engagement letter of Lujan Housler, PC. Billy and Ashley. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, board of education approves the audit engagement letter dated January thirty first, twenty twenty five, of Lujan Housler, PC, related to the external audit of fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. All those in favor? All right. Any board member issues that anybody would like to bring up? All right, very good. Need a motion for executive session. John's rep. Be resolved, board of education will enter into executive session with the intent not to reconvene the business portion of the meeting if discussion is related to the employment history or history, history of a particular person or persons and the educational history of a particular student or students. All those in favor? Opposed. All right, thank you very much.